I think that everybody here knows that we consider our student board reps a very integral and important part of our board meetings. And tonight, we were going to hear from each one of them when they talk about their respective schools and the many good things that are happening there at Clinch, Volunteer, and Cherokee. So Kenzie, you want to start us off?
Sure.
And you may want to go with Mike.
Or you may not want to, but that's a bad place to go.
Okay, you don't have a choice.
Well, I don't have too much, but let's see. I just kind of have a recap of what's gone on over the last month. So we opened our student lounge, as you guys know, and I don't know if you guys have heard any feedback from students, but I have, and I think they really like it. I know my close friends do live here a lot, and they really enjoy it. We held our Valentine's dance, and I know students had a lot of fun, but it was canceled a few times, so.
Who's fault was that? Mr. Kinners?
Yeah. We had eighth grade, and that was really successful. I think we'll have a lot of CTE involvement this year, that everyone will actually go into the classrooms, which I think was fun for them. And then we've also been having eighth grade visits, so kind of same thing, they come to all the CTE classrooms and just get a feel of what's going on, what to expect. Our culinary force students won first place entree and third overall at their Bristol Motors Speedway Culinary Challenge, so that was a good success. We had two band members attend the Allstate Senior Clinic, and then Cherokee Football was awarded.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Ready, Anna? This is Anna Ropriga. She goes to Volunteer High School.
I'm a really big talker. I have like a lot, so invite her a bit, sorry. So yeah, Anna Ropriga, I go volunteer, and I'm just gonna kind of tell them about what we've done in our second semester, since we moved after winter break, which was a little extended. But the second semester of the school year was quite busy, honestly. Most of our sports teams ended at the beginning of the semester, like wrestling, swimming, and basketball. They all had really successful seasons. Wrestling saw a continuation of the legacy of the Glass family, with Oxon Glass placing third in the state, I think two years after his brother placed on the podium during his senior year, so hopefully he'll be back next year. He was a junior this year. The wrestling team as a whole had a pretty great season. They achieved a lot of the goals that they had set for themselves. In addition to wrestling, swimming season ended in January. From what I heard, they also went very well, and the seniors really enjoyed their last season. The basketball teams also had a really good season. After the departure of strong players last year and new coaching, the girls' basketball team finished third in the district. Three of the girls actually were alternate all-conference designated.
Designees.
Designees, thank you. Also, the boys' basketball team also placed third in the district. They are set to have a really great season next year. This season was kind of just rebuilding for next year. Baseball, softball, and tennis, and soccer, boy soccer, all started recently, I think this past week, all of them. Baseball and softball had their first games. Softball won big over Playborne, thirteen to zero, so big game. And the baseball team split their doubleheader with Westring. They lost the first half, I think, and then the second half they won. I don't really know a lot about baseball, so. And the boys' soccer team also had a really great start on Tuesday. They won nine to zero against Kimmernham Gap, so good season. And the tennis team played their first match yesterday. The girls won sixty-three and even won two extra sets. And the boys, they lose, but the win that they did get was from our first-year tennis player, so they were really proud of him. And also, in addition to sports, there's really good extracurriculars at Volunteer. Our band program had a really good marching season last semester. And this semester is our concert season, so it's a little more calm. But last month, we had three students attend the ETSB O eight senior and jazz clinics. One student placed blue band, which is a higher band, in jazz. One student placed in red band for senior clinic, which is a lower band, but also placed really high. And one of the other students placed in both of them. In jazz band, he placed blue band. I think he was like the first chair of the band, so really good. And then he placed first chair red band in senior clinic, so also really good. They all worked really hard. And our jazz band, the Falcon Jazz Band, is starting up now, and we have two performances next month at ETSU and our annual spaghetti dinner fundraiser. I think it's tentatively on April fifteenth, so come on out, come on. The choir program has had a pretty calm semester from what I know so far, but they competed at JV Law today in a regional competition. Hopefully, I haven't really heard a lot. And our ROTC program has also had an amazing second semester. Back in January, our drill team competed at a local drill competition, and we placed top five in color guard, armed, and unarmed. And our rifle team has done an amazing, amazing job, honestly. In February, they went to Navy Nationals, so all of the Navy JROTCs in the nation competed, and they placed third overall. And one of our students actually placed second individually in the nation for Navy ROTCs. And then last weekend, they went to the Tennessee State Championship, and they placed second overall as a team, and three of the four team members placed top eight individually. Actually, the first place in Tennessee is the Volunteer High School, so they actually did amazing, amazing. And in two weeks, I think, they're gonna go to the All-Service National Championship, so it'll be Marines, Navy, Navy Club Scarb, and Army, maybe, I think. And hopefully doing really well. We also had our annual military inspection, the AIA manager, which got drinks and like two, and it went really well. And hopefully we'll get distribution this year. The beats of both the drill and rifle team are made through extreme dedication, flexibility. Most of the time, we're practicing in cafeteria or outside, gym is unavailable, so we benefit a lot from having buildings.
We'll work them, we'll work them.
But in April, we're supposed to go to Paris Island and stay on Marine Base Camp, so it'll be interesting. And also, our CTE programs have a big semester. We've got student buildings on campus for our agriculture community and our criminal justice and fire science, which I think criminal justice and fire science are already starting to use it, and they put their vehicles in there, so I think they're pretty excited about it. The FFA program at our school is very, very good. And we placed second in the livestock judging competition. And Eva Collier, who has been here before, she placed first overall in senior high judging in the thick in the skillathon. They also just did their CTE on wheels fours, I guess you could say. They visited St. Gorgonsville Middle School and Churchill Middle School. And also, we had our eighth grade night just this past week, and they all got to present what each of their programs were, and also many clubs were there. And I know Beta Club is gonna do a, since the women's is pretty much, they're gonna do a feminine hygiene product drive after spring break, so we can help the community of women around us. And I think they're wanting to set up little baskets of them in each bathroom for the girls in our school, so I know that'll be really, really helpful to some of them. And a club that really wanted to say something is our broadcasting club. They have a newscast and a new radio station. Their next, I guess, radio show will be on Monday, and the Cherokee versus Volunteer baseball game at two P M., so you guys are welcome to tune into that. And also, they'll have a March Major concert on Tuesday, the eleventh. Everybody's invited. It's at Volunteer High School at six thirty. The admission is five dollars, and the concert will be for the Volunteer Jam Band and the St. Gorgonsville Middle School Scream Eagles, which were at last month's meeting, so if you guys are interested in going. And they're also currently running a fundraiser. He gave me a stack of flyers, so if anybody wants a flyer, I have them where I'm sitting. And we also had our Shrek the Musical musical last week. It was very, very good. I really liked it. And I think the broadcasting club is gonna post it on YouTube sometime soon, depending on when you post it. But I think that's all I have to say. Volunteer had a really good second semester, and it's only March, so hopefully the next two months will be very, very good.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, as you all know, Clinch is not hardly as big as the other two high schools, so not as much goes on across the mountain. However, I do think for the small atmosphere that we are, we'd stay pretty busy. And since we've been out so much and so many things have happened, and we've not really been in school as much as we had planned, this is just kind of a recap over kind of the whole year thus far. But first, as the editor-in-chief of our 2025 year book, I am very glad to announce that as of this past October, thanks to the hard work of all of our staff members and the gracious support of donations from within our community and even beyond our community, our book has been entirely funded this year, and for the first time in school history, we will be able to place a book in the hands of every student from kindergarten to seniors free of charge.
Wow.
That's cool.
And we're very grateful for everyone who pitched in to make that possible for us and our fellow students. Along with this, I'd like to congratulate our senior Beta Club, because they qualified for nationals in a competition they participated in back in September. And I also like to announce that we're currently looking for donations to fund a national trip to Orlando, Florida in June. Back in February, we celebrated our graduating athletes with senior night, which completed our 2024-25 basketball season, and it was finished with both our girls' and boys' teams taking the win against Top Academy. The date for our call has finally been set. We set it for April twelve, and we're currently looking for donations for that as well. And this past week, as most of you probably know, we celebrated Read Across America Week with various dress-up days and honored Dr. Seuss with this past Wednesday's theme being Reading Makes You Smile, as it was also the date for our pictures, our spring pictures, and both our kindergarten and senior cap and gown pictures, which is a tradition that I think is very special with Clinch, because we are a cap and gown, so you get silly littles and this big kids all in our cap and gowns at once. We're also looking forward to several upcoming events, such as our first-grade bake sale this Friday. Our juniors are taking the ACT for the first time next Tuesday. We are going on a campus visit to Milligan University on March thirty-first, and of course, looking forward to the break in Denver, New. And as probably, everyone's probably aware, but communities and schools has advocated for March to be a month in which kindness matters and is recognized within our school. And our Clinch School kindness campaign began today to, as it is ever for students, faculty, and staff, to be recognized for acts of kindness. If someone witnesses an act of kindness, they're instructed to fill out a nomination slip and place it in a box located near a lobby. And every week for the remainder of this month, a drawing will take place for the nominations, and one staffer, faculty member, and one student will be chosen, and the winner is supposed to receive a prize. So we hope that this event will help convey the power of kindness in our community. And that's my recap of the whole year thus far.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's always good hearing from the students and saying what's going on inside their schools. You're very attentive to what's going on, and you probably come up with that, and you don't have to do any research, you just get it going down the hallway, don't you? Okay. What do you want to report on next week, next month?
Chris, two of the girls, Kenzie and Anna, are going to attend the Scope Conference next week with TSBA, so they can tell about their experience.
We'll enjoy that so much.
Yeah, do a joint discussion with this, how that goes, next month. Is that far enough? Now, who, you two are going?
Yes.
And you're not going? Well, good, you can sit here and make fun of them and try to give them the life. Okay, well, thank you all for your due diligence, okay? Thank you very much. Four member reports, anybody got anything?
I would say that we had a really great visit with Bobby Harshbarger at Volunteer High School. Chris and I were able to be there when the kids kind of did a tour and interview with him, and he received helmets from both Volunteer and Cherokee to display on his office wall in Nashville, and those are already on display. I saw this another Friday, and she said it's looking really cool down there, so we did have a really good visit with him and really spent a lot of time out in CTEs and showing progress there, and I think he was very impressed with a lot of the programs we have going on. And I will say this, the kids there knocked it out of the park that day, and they did great, very well behaved, strong handshakes, handled being put on the spot very well, especially because, you know, we spent a lot of time out in CTEs, especially those kids out there. And so I was really proud of our school that day.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. Real quick note, Senator Harshbarger, he actually sent me a message about some legislation in the Senate, and I was very impressed that he took the time to send me some information. That's never happened before from a representative or a senator. One more report, and I'm gonna ask Hannah if she would describe what took place at Volunteer this morning, but you have to go to the podium.
Don't make me go to the podium.
Well, I'm a huge proponent of CTE, and I needed a college education to make it. I could never weld it or anything like that, but I see in my son that he will probably be a CTE kid. And so the fact that these programs are growing leaps and bounds, it does my soul well. And I also grew up on a farm, and before today happened, I was given a bottle-fed baby lamb. It only had three legs and was dying, and I asked the Ag students to get involved and to help take care of this lamb, and it didn't make it, so it didn't go well. But I promised Claire that I would redeem myself, Claire Bass at Volunteer. And so today, early this morning, I had a farmer call me and say that he had a healthy bottle-fed calf, and he would, you know, would be willing to donate it to our students if they still wanted it. And I said, absolutely. I texted the teacher, she said, bring it on, and so I went and got the lamb, and I took it there. And they're also, have been raising a baby chicken. Someone gave them that when it was just a baby chick, and now it's almost full grown, definitely looks like a chicken. And so we had the sheep and the chicken there today with the students, and they're excited, they're bottle-feeding, they're raising these animals. Had a kid was watching all of this, the sheep and the chicken, and he was stone cold serious, and he looked at me, he's like, cool, now we gotta go end it up. And so I will forever use that story to encourage CTE funding and importance of these programs with our kids. And I will say, to follow up on Harshbarger and my lamb this morning, if you guys get a chance to visit these CTE classes, go Cherokee and Volunteer, they are absolutely, these kids, from culinary to Ag to the carpentry students at Volunteer that day, Chris, we went, were just amazing. The CTE programs have really, absolutely, they are doing some amazing things. And now that we have the barns and the buildings and different things, I feel like it's money well-spent, and I think you guys would really enjoy seeing what they got going on there.
Thank you for doing that. Anybody else? Nobody? I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome, and I apologize for the delay in this, Mayor Dewitt.
No problem.
Would you like to, you got any comments?
Well, our education committee met with Director Hickson just before this meeting, and he gave us a lot of good information. It's getting into budget season, so we'll be meeting every month now. Prior to this meeting, anybody who wants to come, come on. But our education committee did meet today and got a good report from that, so we appreciate that.
I apologize again for not announcing you at the beginning of the meeting.
Not a problem.
But you're welcome at our meetings anytime.
Mr. Christian, can I say something about CTE to tag on to what Hannah said? For those that weren't able to go, and I know we had a pretty decent turnout, we failed our monthly chamber breakfast representing or hosted by Hawkins County Schools at McFeeder's Bend this last week, and we highlighted some unique opportunities in CTE. When people think of CTE, they think of vocational only, but we also have within CTE nursing programs. A lot of those students wind up going to additional college. Teaching as a profession obviously requires university and college-going students as well. So I want to piggyback off of what Hannah said, and it is such a diverse and necessary program. I'm very, very proud of Dr. Williams and Mr. Roten for what they're doing. I wanted to highlight the TAP program, Teaching as a Profession. We're working on a very creative format by which students who are interested in being teachers after high school have the opportunity in high school to shadow their mentor teacher, to do some of their student teaching while they're in high school, to help the teacher plan, help the student deliver, or help the teacher deliver instruction, work with small groups, all facilitated by a certificated teacher. But if we're successful in laying this out, there's a potential for those Teaching as a Profession students within our CTE programs to have student teaching qualified for and done before they get to the university level, saving them up to a year of tuition at the university level. And that's huge for us. You talk about a grow-your-own program within CTE, that's a huge thing, and if we're able to do that, we'll be one of the first in the region to do that. We're very, very proud of that. We highlighted that at the chamber breakfast, among some other things. And speaking of McFeeder's Bend, if you have a chance, they've got the Big Rig Simulator up there that students are gonna use to train for CDL licenses, driving semi-trucks. And that simulator has three screens. You feel like you're driving a truck. You can drive it in manual mode, automatic mode, semi-automatic mode. You can have different scenarios that you go through in backing up big rigs with trailers, going through different scenarios. It's pretty exciting stuff. I could hang out in CTE all day, I'm with Hannah. I think when you're having a bad day, it's a good place to go, because you see kids turned on to education and really engaged in what they're doing. Not that they don't in others, but it's just different. And so I couldn't say, couldn't agree more with what Ms. Speaks said, and thank you for your support of that. I know it's taken a lot of funding and a lot of effort and a lot of creativity, but I think it's paying off.
Yeah, and also, Mayor Dewitt, as we have new industry coming to our region, I know that you posted some today, it really encouraged, you know, and the board encouraged your community contacts and your leadership industry to take some work-based learning students. You know, we have work-based learning students in a lot of places, and that's really been huge. We even have a kid right now at the St. Gorgonsville Airport, and he wants to be a mechanic of planes one day, and so he's doing work-based learning at St. Gorgonsville Airport. And so there's just so many opportunities and so many different ways for us to educate our kids and keep them engaged if they're not the traditional college path. And so anytime that you meet with any of our leaders of industry, encourage them, you know, to meet with Brandon Williams or Seth or Mr. Hickson and, you know, get some of these kids in our work-based learning program.
Good plan, I will do that.
I think that's grown by almost 200% over the last two years. Brandon was quick to say they may not be able to keep up that same rate, so don't hold them to it, but it's growing by leaps and bounds. The first couple of years that they've really reached outside of the area. Just them hillbillies took on a student last year, it was highlighted by the State Department's visit over the summer, so we've got a lot of students out there. I dropped my truck off at Don's Diesel in Carter's Valley, St. Gorgonsville, off of Carter's Valley Road, and he's interested in taking on a student too. So I can't say enough about our community members being willing to take students. We do a good job of sending them responsible, eager-to-learn students that will show up and be professional, but we've got no shortage of that in Hawkins County, thankfully, and they just need opportunities.
Any public comments?
No.
No? Approval of the minutes from the February sixth, 2025 board meeting?
Sub move.
Second.
Now, the motion had a second, any further discussion? If none, I will favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Unopposed, it's approved. Of course, approval of the outlining format of the agenda. If there's anything that you would like to purr, now would be the time to do it for dispatch. If not, the consent agenda will be voted on in its entirety.
Can I make one small change, sorry, clerical, on item number 12A1, the approval of the 2025-26 school year calendar and 2026-27? That's, the 26-27 is draft. That will remain a draft until we get into next year and work with the committee. So if you could add the word "draft" before 26-27, I'd appreciate it.
Now, you're talking under consent agenda number one, approval of the 25-26 school calendar and 26-27 school calendar?
Yes.
And the 26-27 will be a draft?
Draft. It'll remain a draft through next year. It just gives a framework by which we can show employees and parents that we've got some dates chosen, but nothing finalized until we get into next school year.
Okay.
And Kevin Hilton will speak to item four, if you don't mind, right under that, and that is a possible donation of a school bus or buses to the Hawkins County Rescue Squad. And Mr. Jeff Hilton is here to represent that group.
Can you come on up now? Before he starts, did we donate a bus to Hawkins County ambulance service?
The presentation we received earlier in the year?
Yeah.
Yes. One, and they're interested in a bigger one down the road, I believe.
I believe so, yes. But they're all putting that to use?
As far as I know, yes.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
Well, good evening and welcome, board, and we thank you for your time. And I'm gonna allow Jeff to speak here shortly, but he came to me last semester and asked if we had any buses that we could donate. He would like to practice and do an exhibition on how to extricate from a school bus. So we've got two regular ed buses that we are using as scrap anyways for this East Tennessee Clean Fuel Grant that we've received this year, so Bus eighty-five and twenty-five is gonna be salvaged anyways. So I'm proposing if we could donate this to Mr. Hilton to use for our purpose of learning how to extricate in emergency cases. So that's my proposal for that. And then also, we had bus, special ed bus, one twelve, which was surplus many, many years ago, and it was never picked up, and it's just been sitting in St. Gorgonsville in what people call it a boneyard. I don't know why they call it that, but that's my mechanic's. But that's where the, I'm learning this terminology since I've been here, but it's been sitting up there for many, many years, they told me. It was never picked up, it was surplus many years ago, so I thought that would be a great opportunity for him to use for extrication from a special ed vehicle. So I'm gonna allow Mr. Hilton to kind of explain his idea and his thought that this would occur in June, so Mr. Hilton.
Good evening, guys. My name's Jeff Hilton, no relation to him. Food to follow. He's a minister, my father was a minister.
All right, there you go.
So we got a lot more context, won't be a problem. But I'm with Hawkins County Rescue Squad. I've been with them for thirty-plus years, and I'm also an instructor there and an instructor for the Rescue College for the Tennessee Association of Rescue Squads. And what I do primarily, I'm retired now, is I spend about 400 hours a month volunteering, going around the state, training people how to save people's lives, extricate them out of wrecks, grain bins, school buses, foreign accidents, whatever. And we hadn't had a school bus slash mass transit, because you can't ever get Greyhound to donate you a bus. Extrication class in this area in about ten years. That being said, unfortunately, we had a fatality accident last year with involving a school bus. a school bus. And if you pay attention to the news and social media, just this week alone, there's been five school bus accidents. And on the average, just to give you some numbers out there, there is 108 fatalities a year in school bus accidents. 13,200 injuries in school bus accidents a year. But that being said, it sounds like a lot of things you've got to consider, too. There's 20 million students a day transported on the school buses. And I will tell you this, and I was wanting, you're crazy. Because, you know, I grew up, you run all over the bus and everything else, and nothing to talk about seat belts, but I can attest to you guys as board members, and I wish there was more parents still here, that is the safest vehicle these students can ride on, even without the seat belts, because they're built like a tank. And that's the reason we have to have these trainings is because you just can't go in there thinking like you normally could and start cutting on a bus. You cut in the wrong places, and you're going to cause it to be infogged, collapse, whatever. And these guys need to understand that. But our plan is to teach this class June 28th and 29th. That's the last weekend in June. It would be open to everybody in this region. Hawkins County and Churchill Rescue Squad will be co-hosting this. And as of right now, our two rescue squads, some guys from Newport, Sullivan County, Unicoid County, and about four different volunteer fire departments are going to be coming from this area to that class. And it's a two-day class, and we welcome providing you guys let us have these buses. If you want to see some of the stuff that goes on, on the 29th, on Sunday afternoon, at the church, be hopefully a beautiful sunny day, bring you a lounge here up there. We're going to be at the TCAT facility at Fitz Bend. They've agreed to let us do everything up there, and that way we're on good land of ground, but outside of the public and a hose, where everybody's stopping and wrecking and taking pictures. But that's our plan, as long as we can get these buses provided to us. And like I said, it'd be the last thing, one that was done that I know of, that the school system donated the buses for, was about 10 years ago, and it was at Churchill, by mistake. So we needed around here. Just the other day, we had a bus involved in an accident out here at Bureau, and they had been flowing more or less. Luckily, nobody was hurt, nothing major, but it ain't a matter of if it's going to happen, it's when it happens, and it's done happened to us here, unfortunately, and we don't want that to happen again. So we're good. And I'm proud, while I'm up here, I was getting on this soapbox, too, about the CTE. I'm proud of the stance you guys are taking on that and supporting these and these schools because on my side of it and on the voluntary fire department's side of it, because of the fire science programs, we're seeing an influx of all these younger kids wanting to get involved in this. We were to the point until this come along, we're like, man, we're all getting old. It's hard for me to get up out of this chair to go do this. We need some more young people in here, and because of this, we've all, and I'll tell you right now, as far as Hawkins County Rescue Squad Junior Program, you can even ask people in Nashville, we're known all across the state as our junior program, being the best one in the entire state. So I give kudos to our people that run that and to our kids that are willing to take time to do it, and they're enjoying it. So thank you, guys, for your support on that.
Thank you.
You got any questions for me about it?
No.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I go back to that number one, where you said you wanted 26 and 27 to be a draft?
Yes.
Could we just omit that for this vote so there's no confusion, or do we need to go ahead and do it that way?
For the last several years, we've approved the next year calendar and a draft to be attached to that, so that operates, that gives us a template by which to operate on.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll just leave it on.
Your copy inside your packet and that that's released to the public does say draft. It just didn't make the agenda.
Okay. So anybody, everybody good with that?
With that being said, Chris, if you want to omit it, that's your decision. I was just telling you that.
No, no. That's fine. That's fine. I knew we did two years in a row, but I didn't know, actually, I didn't know it was a draft the previous year.
So we use that as a calendar committee, that draft, to start work on over the course of next year for the following year, and we'll do the same issue, too.
No. No, I'm good. I'm good. So everybody's good with the formatted agenda as it stands? Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as it stands?
Subway.
Have a motion?
Second.
Well, we got it. Any further discussion? If none, I will in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved under the current format. Delegations?
Would you mind, just for clarity purposes, if the board wouldn't mind, just acting separately on item four, just to clarify for Mr. Hilton that you have approved the surplus of that?
I make a motion, the approval to donate a school bus to Hawkins County Rescue Squad for training purposes.
Second.
Kevin, do we put the Harvard School Buses?
Yeah. We're going to do a special ed bus.
School buses. I'll read it again. Approval to donate school buses to Hawkins County Rescue Squad. Let me back up. How many buses are we donating?
Three.
Okay. Approval to donate three school buses to Hawkins County Rescue Squad for training purposes. We have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? If none, I will in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not opposed, it passes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
So now back to, did we get the vote on the agenda? Okay. Oh, delegations from HCA, you have a representative here? No. Education Committee, we heard from our mayor. Thank you for that. Reports? Mr. Hickson?
Thank you, Mr. Christian. Just wanted to give an update on the evaluation survey. Mr. Christian and I and Laura Lee, I think we've got that formatted, and I think are close to getting that out to the board via email. Mr. Christian, is that correct, between now and next board meeting?
Yeah.
And then we can talk about it at April?
We may do a workshop on that.
Okay.
Maybe. We'll see what the final draft looks like.
But just to give you an update, it's been a while since we've talked about that, so I want to give you an update about that. And then some of you have asked about the resolution that's required to initiate the teacher bonus from the state that's been talked about attached to item four under the Education Freedom Act. That $2,000 one-time bonus, I know you all support that, but future details are being released between now and April. And Mr. McCarty has asked if we could delay discussion on that until the 3rd or the 10th of April, when he can be here to give you the latest details. There's more details coming down from the state, his recommendation to all of us, and he couldn't be here this evening. But per the phone call I had with him yesterday, he is recommending that the board wait to see what details come out between now and then, and he can update you all in April before you guys take action on that resolution for the teacher bonus. And I think that's all I had.
Okay. Well, if Mr. McCarty can't make it, I've got a few ideas for a resolution.
Okay.
But I'll stop there. Okay, that's all for reports. Consent agenda. Well, in its entirety, it's before the board for the approval of consent agenda.
Subway.
A motion?
Second.
There we go. We have a motion? We have a second. Any further discussion? If none, I will in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not opposed, consent agenda is approved. That brings us to unfinished business. Any unfinished business? None? And then that brings us to new business. And if I may, so I can get my paper straightened out. We got a application for a non-faculty coach, am I correct? It was submitted late, but the season has started, and we need to take action on this. Anyone who want to speak on behalf of this application for a non-faculty coach?
It's gone through all the requisite requirements, so we're clear on our end as long as the board clears it.
The, do you all want any? I got it right here in front of me, if you have any questions of who it is or anything.
Everyone has a copy of it.
Well, okay. It's, I make a motion, we approve Travis Green as an assistant baseball coach at Segonsville School.
Subway.
That was number four. We went to number four.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because it was on top of my papers. So we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion? If none, I will in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not opposed, the motion passes. Now we get to our new business, discussion on Clinch Water Line.
Yeah. Ms. Shedd has some information. She spoke with a community member in the Clinch area and wants to update the board.
I got a call earlier this week from Mr. Roger Lamb, who has been a staunch supporter of Clinch School ever since I've been on the board. He's attended meetings, he's come here and attended meetings. He's just a really good man. They are looking at over in Clinch, trying to hook up to the Hawkins County, Hancock County Sneadville Utility Water. So right now, their, our school system, over in Clinch is on well. So what they're proposing is to explore the grants that are available to help with that. They already talked to Gary Hicks about it, and I think they have some calls in to some of the other senators and representatives. But our school at Clinch, when we built that school, fire retardant was sprayed on every steel being in that school. Everything, even behind the drywall, everything was sprayed with the fire retardant. And that's what kept us from having to put in a sprinkler system at Clinch, because that action of spraying with the fire retardant was approved by the fire marshal. So Clinch is safe. I don't want you to think that we're over there without any water. We do have water with the well, which is okay, but it would be even better if we were able to hook on to that water line. And it would also, they're trying to bring it into the entire Clinch Valley, so it would also be a great thing for the people and the residents that live over there. Right now, we're just in the exploring stages. No capital outlay is required, but he just wanted to make us aware of what they're looking at and kind of not necessarily to get our blessing, but just to make us aware so that he'll keep us informed. And if they get to the point where they are discussing monetary means by which to do the project, we'll have to bring that back before the board, obviously. But I just wanted to share that with everyone. I think it would be a great thing, not only for us, but for the people over there. And they do, he do, he does want to put the fire hydrant at the entrance to Clinch School, so we would have direct access from that. And anything else you want to add on?
My understanding, and Mr. Roach had approached me several months ago, telling me that Mr. Lamb was looking into that, and there was no obligation on our standpoint, so he has, at this point, started to look into that and started to get the ball rolling. Very appreciative of those efforts. My understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Debbie, but our involvement is not, the Clinch Water Line coming to Clinch is not dependent on our participation in that or not.
I don't think it is, no.
So I think we're safe and moving forward, at least at the exploratory stage of what it would take to get a water line over to the Clinch Valley to serve the number of residents plus the school. To echo what Ms. Shedd said, if we were to tee into it, my understanding is that our cost would be the backflow valve, the piping, and the labor to run the pipe from the street to?
From the road back behind the school where those outlets are, those water things.
And also, put to public's mind, it is, we do have a functioning backup generator there now. It does automatically kick on anytime power is lost, so that we still have access to water.
Right.
At the school.
Right.
And that is working very well this year. We've tested it numerous times, so test it under real situations.
Well, I hope we can make that happen, or they can make that happen.
I hope so, too.
Assist in making that happen. We looked into it a number of years ago, and there was just a lot of obstacles in the way at the time. Maybe things have changed. They were really concerned, if I'm not mistaken, the lifetime is about the water becoming stale at the end of the line. Did they, have they mentioned anything to you that time?
I think, I think that was, and correct me if I'm wrong, because that was being looked at when I came, and I believe Master Sergeant Tim
Yeah.
at Lakeview was looking at that. And what the problem was, was twofold, the turbidity or the pressure at the end of the line, which we would be on the end of that coming from
Yeah.
Mooresburg area. And also, there was, there wasn't a certainty that they would get enough customers to help fund that project that would commit to hooking on to it.
And I'm sure there's been some growth in that area.
There has.
And again, this is coming from Hancock, so it's a different project, but I think the thought there is that if it's an easier access to get water that way, it's worth looking into.
Oh, I agree. I agree, and thanks for bringing that to the board. Yeah, that's something that maybe to be done years ago. All right, number two.
So E-rate. Is everybody familiar with E-rate? Wayne's here, he can explain it real quick, but does everybody understand what E-rate allows us to do as far as the school system? Is there a need to get a brief summary of it?
No.
We have to, okay, we have to contract with a provider for E-rate, and it's usually a four- to five-year commitment. That is changing in the state. It was put out for bid Nashville Metro and recently Anderson County, and we piggybacked off of Anderson. We were named in that bid RFP process. The company that won that bid is going to result, it's going to result in Hawkins County having a pretty substantial savings and increased capabilities, increased internet speeds, increased telecommunications across the board. It's a win-win. The reason we chose to add it to new business rather than waiting till next month is the sooner we get on board, correct me if I'm wrong, Wayne, but the sooner we jump on this, the sooner the transition can occur with those that have signed on, that were approved through this RFP, and the more seamless our transition between the existing company and the new company would be. So.
The older company that we're in now, the contractor's running out, so they put the RFP out. We were part of consortium, there were 60-something schools on consortium together, and so we had to do something. And the company we're with now, which is Zayo, they are, they did not win the bidding. So we need to move to somewhere else, and we've got a time period to get everything transitioned over and seamless matter. That's why we wanted to bring this board tonight, so we can go ahead and start that process. While, you know, with our 60-something other schools, we'll be doing the exact same thing. So we wanted to get on the process upfront, so we can not have any cuts down the line on time.
On that second paragraph under two, it says we will pay $39,000. It's actually save. So if you want to change that to save.
That's a good.
Yeah, that's savings per year.
I wanted to point that out before you voted, though.
That'll be savings per year.
Well, we've not even gotten a motion.
Yeah, right, right. No, shouldn't discuss it to this point, but sorry.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Subway.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second. Now we can have discussion. My question is this, uh, and I'm not picking on saying this is bad, good, you know, I'm, I'm indifferent to it at this point. Host and Connect, are they servicing us in any of?
Host and Connect is our backup. They are running along the side of the current provider now, and they will continue to run along the side of the, the new company as our secondary backup. So if charter communications go out, which is one of the service providers that is contracted with, uh, UDT. Uh, if for some reason they've had a break in the line or something, then Host and Connect, just, it'll be seamless. They just pick up the load until charter, uh, gets their, their line fixed, and then they'll come back online and nobody will even know the difference. That's why we also put in a generator at the central office, so if we have a power outage, it will kick in and keep the internet going. So, we've got backups, you know, so, uh, hopefully we won't be down.
Okay.
And to further answer your question, correct me if I'm wrong, since this is a federal program, a lot of local co-ops don't bid on this. It's the larger conglomerates that bid, provide bids for these, because they've got to provide telecommunications, internet, um, what am I missing?
The UDT company that's won the bid, they also take care of the University of Tennessee, and also the city, uh, border regions. So, they can handle those big, they can handle us.
And this will be your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? Anyone want to consider tabling this, becoming more familiar with it, or are we ready to move on with the vote? All right. No further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, that is approved. Ms. Ben Leedy's.
Yes, turn it over to Roy. I was just gonna introduce you, so.
Well, no. We've got, uh, Ms. Ainglass is here this evening, and she's wanting to talk about a project that was started when Mr. Boyd before was over just at the one where I am at now. About the gymnasium at Mount Carmel School. And she would like to come up and speak to y'all about that.
Okay.
I'm sure it continues to move forward.
Hello. I know Mr. Boyd had already spoke to you a little bit about this, but, um, there's a man by the name of Mr. Steve Bryant, and he created a Facebook page, um, called Mount Carmel Tennessee Memories. And he has proposed that our gymnasium be officially named in honor of Quentin Dykes. And Quentin Dykes was the principal at Mount Carmel Elementary School for over forty years. Um, he, at the time, it was Liberty Hill, um, when he was there. Um, but, the Facebook page shares fond memories of Liberty Hill, um, and Mr. Dykes and his strong leadership are brought off, brought up often. Um, about every post you see is something about, about Quentin Dykes. He, um, many just say he was a good man, is how they word it. Um, one of the quotes that I thought was, um, relevant was, "He took an illiterate second grade kid and turned him into an officer and an English teacher, and I am proud of his leadership and dedication to enable my successful early learning." So that was just a comment by, by one of the, um, previous students at Liberty Hill. Um, the school staff is supportive of this decision, um, if approved. And Mr. Steve Bryant would like to invite the community and Mr. Dykes' family to join on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, for a ceremony, uh, which happens to be Mr. Dykes' birthday, um, to officially name the gymnasium Quentin R. Dykes Memorial Gym- Gymnasium. Uh, there would be a small ceremony, a plaque in his honor, and light refreshments.
Okay. We need to approve that.
Yeah, so, so I do recommend the board approve this, so that the group, if, if approved, the group can proceed forward with getting the plaque and proceeding forward, um, at Mount Carmel Elementary.
Well, do you want to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Yeah.
We knew exactly what she said.
And I second that motion. Any further discussion? If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, it is approved, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, we've got one more that is not listed on our new business, Ms. Gorlova.
Yes, um, so I just, um, wanted, I already sent you all the emails with all the information, but, um, should I summarize again?
Sure.
Just for everybody in the room?
Sure.
So, um, I would like to make a motion to pass a resolution to support Senate Bill, uh, which is oh-four-seven-six HB oh-one-three-four, uh, which, uh, would ban or remove red dye forty from school food. Um, this is a bill that is set to be voted on in, uh, Tennessee, uh, at the state level, let's say, on the state level. Um, and I just want to summarize what I wrote in the email, 'cause not everybody got the email, just the school board and Matt and Jennifer. Um, so this bill, uh, aims to ban red dye dye from school food, other than at fundraising events. So this would not affect, like, sports games or anything like that. Um, and this would come into effect starting August first, twenty-twenty-seven. So that would give schools plenty of time to make necessary changes that are needed. And of course, it's going to be done on the state level, because my motion is just to support this bill to show our willingness to work towards making school food even better. Um, so again, we wouldn't be doing this on a local level before the state enforces it, so it shouldn't be, uh, logistically an issue either. Um, several other Tennessee school boards, as from what I heard, are passing similar resolutions already. I heard about Sullivan and Knox Counties doing it. Um, and I just want to summarize a little bit about red dye dye. Uh, recently, they banned this in California, and I believe also this would be effective since, um, starting August first, twenty-twenty-seven. So other states are going ahead and, um, doing this, it's, it's the right thing to do. Um, also, European countries require a warning label on all foods containing this artificial dye, because, uh, it affects children with, especially children with ADHD. And, uh, it affects children's concentration, uh, hyperactivity, things like that. So, uh, it's been shown to do it. Um, also, just to note that this past January, on the federal level, they banned red dye three also. So unfortunately, this is not the only type of dye that is used in foods, but, um, this one would be a good start. And I sent in all the links, uh, so I mean, this, the board members, I hope you had a chance to look through it. If anybody has any other questions, um, you can ask them. But basically, I think this would be a good thing to do, to just show our support, um, and, um, commitment to making school food better.
Okay. Can you clarify the motion for the record?
Yeah, so, um, the motion, uh, so I would make, I'd like to make a motion to pass a resolution to support Senate Bill, and the number.
Okay.
And, oh yeah, the wording of the resolution is below, in the email.
Okay. Uh, I'll make that motion?
Second.
Well, you have a second. Any further discussion?
Real, real quick, if there are questions about impacts or anything, Mandy is here this evening. Um, she did provide a list of commonly-used food items in public, not necessarily in schools, but, um, it ranges from Pop-Tarts to ice cream cups to salad dressings, um, but it's not as big of a list as, like, red dye three. So, um, and as Ms. Gorlova pointed out, red dye three was banned by our federal government, and we have until January of twenty-seven to-
Uh, August first, I believe, twenty-twenty-seven.
That's if this passes.
Oh, okay.
If, if the red dye three federally, we have until-
Sorry.
No, that's fine, we're both right, just talking about the different dyes, so, yeah.
And this is a resolution supporting the Tennessee?
Yes, on the state, show, to show our support to, uh-
Yeah.
-legislators that-
Yeah, not for us to do it.
No, we, we would just comply with the law if it passes.
Yeah.
My understanding of the resolu- of the motion is to support the-
Yes.
-legislators as they, as they draft this and move it forward.
Just to let them know that we would like this to get done.
Yeah, just wanted to, so, get it clarified, so she gets it, and people don't misunderstand what voting.
We're not taking any action locally to, to ban anything, we're just supporting the legislators that are bringing it forward.
Exactly. So, we have a motion, we have a second, no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. I've got one more thing. I'll be brief, as I can. I want to ask the board for support in possibly looking into our payroll department and see if we can't pay our employees bi-monthly. Currently, we pay the majority, well, the majority of our employees are paid once a month. We do have some employees that are paid bi-monthly, am I correct in that?
Uh, I would say our, our certificated staff, including our administrators, are all monthly. Almost everybody else is bi-monthly.
Okay, so.
There are through, there are six different payrolls, and there are two, I think, two different schedules, monthly and bi-monthly.
Okay. Uh, I just, with, looking at the economy, and this is something I've been interested in for a number of years now, but I'm asking the board to give it some thought, and see how you all would feel about looking into, if it's feasible for us to do this for our employees.
And we'd want to do it bi-weekly, let's say?
Bi-monthly.
Bi-weekly is every two weeks.
Bi-weekly.
Bi-monthly is every two months, or basically.
Yeah, and what, what, I've got questions, though. Historically, school, public education systems pay their teachers once a month. Is there a specific reason for that? Is there a cash flow issue? Uh, how, how do we make that? I don't understand why we're paying once a month.
Is it, doesn't it have something to do with, uh, manpower?
It, it does when-
The work for our employees?
That is a big piece, I, I think if, if we were to head in this direction, I would recommend that we have all employee groups shift to the new payroll, um, cycle, because in essence, you're adding a cycle for a group of roughly five, five hundred, uh, employees if we shifted the certificated folks over. And without adding staff, that's nearly doubling the amount of work monthly that has to be done to process payroll.
Okay.
The other thing I would say is, is I would recommend, subject to your all's approval, but just a recommendation from me, knowing how payroll works, I would survey our employee groups and just find out if for sure that's a majority wish. Because, uh, I know a lot of banks work with our employees, whether from custodians to teachers to through the direct deposit, uh, actions of their payroll checks, um, they can have a certain percentage set aside to savings, they can have a certain set aside for certain bills, um, and it can be, a lot of the budgeting piece can be done at the bank level as well, so, without impacting payroll.
Okay.
So I, I would suggest, if you do want us to look into that, I, I will get the ball rolling with, with, uh, Ms. Farmer. But I think that part of that would be a survey of our employee groups that are on the monthly, that would be affected if we went to two times a month.
And it's either all or none.
I would s- suggest that, just because of the amount of work, otherwise we're looking at adding employees to help process payroll.
Is there any other ways or means we could look at our payroll department? If we were to choose to move forward in looking at, at this, I would also like to look at, see if there's a possibility of maybe outsourcing. But it's up to this board. I'm not saying to do this, this would be a board decision to even look at it at this point. So, what y'all saw?
Well, is there an issue now, like, are a lot of employees not happy that they're?
The ones I've talked to, they would like to see bi-weekly, am I getting that correct?
We call it semi-monthly, to be clear. We call it monthly semi-monthly. Yeah.
Mayor D L.
How, how, in respect, how do other systems around us, do, do they pay twice a month?
No, we surveyed, uh, several years ago when this came up, we surveyed and, um, we found one in our immediate area that didn't pay monthly. Yeah, in, in east Tennessee, my understanding is, uh-
For these same, for these same reasons?
Vast majority pay their teaching staff monthly.
I was kind of thinking it's worth looking into, if you're looking at the economy around that.
And I don't know any that have separate payroll departments, other than your larger metropolitans may run payroll, um, services for, uh, processing paychecks, pay stubs, and, uh, direct deposits, but I think those are primarily your larger city systems.
How is payroll handled now?
In-house here, with, uh, one or two folks processing every employee's, one that rectifies basically leave balances with their actual leave dates, and one that processes payroll for the different individuals we employ.
Well, how, I mean, what's the process like? Do the data parks at the individual schools figure the employees at each school, and send that to central office, to the people in payroll?
People at the school site and in, in departments verify leave and absences that would affect a pay cycle for an individual employee. Once those are verified, then it comes to payroll, and then the process just happens again. And then those, those checks are approved, those amounts are approved, sent to the bank to run, and direct deposit and/or the checks are, are processed.
Okay. I had heard that we're not using any kind of electronic means of tracking payroll, it's still, for our employees, it's done on, with paper, okay? But I don't know. But that's why I'm asking the board to be-
There's a mixture. I can tell you that there's probably more techn- technological means by which we can do some of the work, but we do a number of checks and balances, and some of those checks and balances does, does require, uh, or our employees prefer, those that are in charge of that, to do a final check and balance on paper, for example, but a lot of it's done electronically. The, the banking is done electronically, the processing, the tax information at the, at the end of this year, um, currently, that's all done electronically.
I'm seeing we use a payroll processing software.
Mm-hmm. Yep, local government, which is a, a, a state contractor, um, that, there's local government, there's several that process payroll, but we use local government.
Well, I'd just like to see if there's any support moving forward with this, so I'd like to put that in form of a motion, not to do it, but just to move forward. And that's my motion.
Both pieces or one?
Both.
So on, okay, to verify, then we're going to hold the step, it's going to be our step.
Mm-hmm.
That's going to be what we're going to go with it, and then, I think on outsourcing payroll, uh, with my clients in the accounting world, uh, we're about half and half, half outsourced, half in-house, and, um, so I think, for me, it would come down to a numbers thing, you know, if it's cheaper.
I agree with that.
And we would still get the same quality of-
I, I will-
I think that we would probably require a quote of some kind.
Most definitely.
Yeah.
Most definitely.
Here's, depending on how far you want to go with it, we would have to run an RFP for that. We would have to do a request for proposals, we'd have to go through the county mayor's office, um, to, to do that. We'd have to go through that process. I don't know if that's something you want to do prior to making a decision, uh, because that is pretty lengthy, drawn-out process. We could, we, we, what, what, what I'm, what I'm suggesting before going there, because Hannah's right, we would have to do that, get bids and that type of thing. What I would suggest is that we maybe poll any school system that has an outsourced payroll, who they use, what the costs are, what the staffing requirements are, because the payroll companies that have made it in the door to talk to me and to Melissa have all said, "Well, you know, we can't really save you on your employer-" you know, we can't really save you on your employees, you're still going to have to have somebody there to receive the information, verify the information, and then check it off and clear it for the payroll service to process." If we're not saving on the employee side, then we may save minimally on processing time and fees, but none of our banks charge us fees.
Well, let's just see, I'm asking, let's take a look at it, not in that kind of depth where we have to give an RFP.
I can ask others what, if those are at outsourced, I can find out information. If you want me to do informal stuff like that-
Yes.
-for the time being.
Yes.
Okay.
So, no further discussion?
Are you putting then in a motion?
Do we even need a motion on that, though, since it's just going to get us information?
Okay.
Do, I mean, do we, I'm asking?
We don't have to, no?
I don't, I don't particularly need one.
I don't need a motion, you just tell me to do it.
Okay. But I just want to make sure the board understands we're just looking into this. We're doing our due diligence as a board, and saying if we can't, you know, no other schools are doing this, maybe it could help attract employees. Just looking at the positives and the negatives to see if it's feasible or not. So, if everybody's in agreement of doing, having my look into it, bring back some information and some suggestions, and we'll move forward after that. Everybody good with that? I want to thank you for that. Make a motion, do you?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn after we thank Churchill Elementary for our little gifts, and thank the football-
Cherokee High School.
Cherokee High School for our-
Let's go, Mary.
And then I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Wait, can I, can I make an announcement, in case some folks don't know? I just want to go ahead and do this. Well, everyone is familiar with Jeff Bobo. He's not here tonight. His father passed away. And of course, Jeff being from Chicago, he had to take off to Chicago. I briefly spoke with him a few days ago, and he's having to spend some time up there with his mother. He is still working from Chicago, so if you do need to-
That's why I was taking pictures tonight. Going to share them.
Okay.
He gave me some homework to do. Anna wouldn't do that, but Jeff did that.
But, uh-
Glad to see you're not the only one. Yeah.
You know, Jeff's been around Hawkins County for a very long time, and I just wanted folks to know he lost his father. And there's one more person I want to recognize that has passed away. A, she, she was a teacher at Hawkins County Schools for years and years and years and years. I've known her all my life. She passed away this past week, and I just want to mention her name, Phyllis Marshall. I don't know if y'all are familiar with her. Daughter, she has a daughter, lives in Knoxville, but Phyllis, I can remember her in elementary school. Never had her as a teacher, but I, I remember her and know her, knew her as an adult, but I just wanted to say that that's one of our long, long, long-term, very dedicated employees we've lost, so.
While, while we're on that, though, I do, I want to call out Dr. Bailey's mother.
Oh, yeah.
I know many of you were praying for her the last couple of weeks, and that's, it's tough, she, she lived a very good, long life, and we lived vicariously through Reba's stories that she'd tell us about her mother, as she was caring for her, and her and her brother cared for her for many, many years, and of course, neighbor to Tecky Hicks there on the same road. Very well-known and very valued community member, from what I've heard. I wish I would have had the opportunity to know her better, but again, learned a lot about her from her daughter, who cared for her each and every day, and wanted to mention her as well.
I'm sorry, I forgot that. Death comes too fast. Who's up, Bones? Anybody else got any comments before we adjourn? None? Kathy made the motion, adjourn, thank you very much.